Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a remote meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board. It is Thursday, March 18th, 2021 at 7:00 PM, or just after 7:00 PM. This is a joint meeting between the Conservation Commission, and we may have members of the Board of Health, but I don't know if they'll be calling a public hearing open, or a joint meeting. In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20 relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, the March 18th, 2021 Public Meeting of the Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lakecam. You do not need a Facebook account to view this meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecam.tv backslash. Please remain muted until called on. The chat has been disabled. It was explained a little earlier for legal reasons. And at this time, I'd like the Conservation Commission to call their meeting to order.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
All right, this is Bob Bouchard, Chairman of the Lakeville Conservation Commission. The meeting will come to order. It is Thursday, March 18th. I think that's it. Meeting will come to work.
Bob, do you want to call attendance before you back over?
Okay. All right, let's start with Joseph.
Present.
Nancy.
Present.
John. Absent. Josh.
Present.
And Mark.
Present.
And myself, of course. Okay.
Thank you, Chairman Bouchard. While I have the floor back, I'm going to call attendance for the Planning Board. I have myself, Mark Knox, present. I have Barbara Mankowski present. I have Peter Conroy present. Michelle McEckren present, and Jack Lynch present. I saw Chris Spratt from the Board of Health. Are you guys going to call a meeting tonight, or are you just here to give an update, Chris?
No, we never continued to this meeting. And we finalized our portion of this whole process last night.
Yep, so you'll give us an update tonight?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And there's no other members from the Board of Health here?
I don't anticipate Derek or Bob showing up, but they may. I can't say one way or the other, but I think...
Okay, thank you.
I'm the rep.
And I'm just looking for the record. Is Scott Turner present?
Yeah, Mark.
Yep, thank you, Scott. Scott Turner from Environmental Partners is present, peer review engineer on behalf of the town. And Town Council is not present yet, but they will be joining us soon. They had another meeting conflict, so at this time, Chris Spratt from the Board of Health, why don't you give us an update on your meeting last night, please?
So, yes, we opened it up to the public, and we had a handful of people ask some questions. But as was discussed at the last joint meeting, there's not a whole lot for us to really deal with. It's mainly the septic system. And there's no real major concerns. It's pretty straightforward. And it was brought up last night before we voted that if it wasn't a project like this with all the attention, it's the kind of project that our agent would have approved himself. But we felt it as a board. We took on the responsibility of making sure we all did it too, and felt we owed it to the townspeople and the butters and whatnot to make a vote, you know, as a board. So we voted unanimously to approve it because, I mean, it was pretty straightforward. They're not asking for anything special.
And so, to be clear, you guys approved a subsurface sewage dis...
We did.
Was there anything else?
After we voted, we did discuss, just making a recommendation for you guys to decide whether to add, if it came to it, any conditions. We thought it might be a good idea that if down the road where we have to deal with any noise issues, if they become a complaint, that maybe some kind of either a bond be set aside or something like to that nature to be able to use that review noise engineer, possibly, and maybe some money for monitoring devices if it became an ongoing issue down the road. We've had other situations in town in the past where we've had to borrow monitoring devices from DEP. And I don't know if that's something that we can continue doing going forward. So it was discussed to just make that recommendation to maybe condition something similar to that. At least recommend for you guys to discuss on the Planning Board.
So a condition to have some sort of funding to have ongoing monitoring for sound, or if there are sound complaints?
Yeah, if it became an ongoing complaint, you know, major...
And I do believe, I know that was part of the draft of conditions that I put forward. And I know all of the other board members sent their desired conditions to the peer review engineer. So I'm 99% sure that something is in there to speak to that. Exactly the wording, I don't think it's been resolved yet, but we will give you an update on that as well.
All right, cool.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, there's not much more to add.
I appreciate it. Chairman Bouchard, would you like to take over? And I know you guys, I had to leave the meeting a little early last week, but you discussed the Order of Conditions and all the conditions. Would you like to speak to that? You're muted, Bob.
I thought I just...
There you go. You just came unmuted.
All right. Yes, we did have some discussions back and forth on some of the finer points. Made a few revisions, some minor ones. And I think we're at a stage now where we're pretty much ready to vote on it. I would like to have Scott make some final comments if he's available before we take a vote.
Mr. Chair, could I just interject one thing?
Yes.
Nancy, you had called me earlier today about an additional condition. Do you still have any comment on that or concern?
Yes, I do. After the fact, after our meeting on March 9th, we received a request for an additional condition from VHB. It's not anything we've discussed. I'm only ready to vote on today what we agreed to on the night. And Scott has added our comments. We had changed a couple of little things. Scott fixed it and sent it out. I don't think it went out to everybody till today. I just want to make sure what we're voting on if we vote is Scott's updated version that we all agreed to on the night. And if so, I'm ready to make a motion.
That said, I just would like to give Tyler Murphy from Rhino Capital an opportunity to speak to that one additional condition that they put in, and maybe he could clarify that.
Can I just comment first, please? That he didn't put it in, it was a request.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, the request, I believe, was around bonding or a type of bond. And just from experience in other projects, namely a project we have in Seaburke, New Hampshire, and then another project in Billerica, we've hit growing season issues. And so that would be representative by, you know, say bushes and plants and things of that nature going in in maybe October as the projects come into completion, which don't have time to fully take hold, bloom, bud, etc., until the following spring season. And the particular project in Billerica, not to talk about the project just because it's a good example, we had to plant 12 bushes as part of our restoration effort and the work that we were doing in October. As they did not have time to bloom. So what we did in order to complete the project is we bonded those 12 bushes that if they didn't bloom or needed to be replaced, as opposed to waiting till the spring for those bushes to then review the entire project as a whole. They were such a small component of the overall effort that was made. And so the bonding idea is something that we've experienced in other towns do formally, basically to allow very specific small areas that may not have bloomed fully or fully taken hold. And if they don't, and they need work, that bond money is there to correct it. It's certainly not to say that the landscaping package needs to be complete in its format for review. There's no question about that. It's really to just help identify very small items which may be able to be bonded over. And that's what that request was regarding.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Nancy.
It's really nice to think it would be a small area. I think if we're going to change our conditions at all, I just do not agree with doing it this late along when we've already decided. It's something that the Commission could take off later in the project if it really is a small area. But that condition in itself that was proposed does not say a small area. So we've had experience with this in the past before with bonds. So I'm not happy with that. And if the Commission would like to go to our next meeting and review it and talk about it, I'll still be opposed to it. Like I say, we're ready to vote. I'm ready to vote on it tonight with the conditions that we've agreed to and had several meetings about. And that Scott has given us the revised edition. We have it, and we're ready to go. I can't see this holding that up. And I'm not agreeable to it could be a small area. We don't know what's going to happen. And we have the ability later on in the project to change. It says in the Order of Conditions, we can change things up. And if it's a small area and that's what's happened, we can do it later on in the project.
All right. Before we do vote, I'd like to hear from everyone, give them a chance to make a comment. So if that's y'all set, then Nancy?
Yes, John's not here either tonight, so he did agree at the last meeting. Just want to put that in.
Joseph, what about you?
We got a couple of questions here. Item number 36. There's a blank for the date of the planting plan?
Yes.
At some point?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that that be put in the motion when we make the motion, that the date of the planting plan be put in the motion when we make it.
The date I have for the plan is 3/9/21.
Okay, that would be part of the motion.
Okay.
Number 40. We should get a name and contact information for whoever the wetland specialist is going to be, correct?
A name when?
It's not named, because they don't know. But I mean, that should be part of the order of conditions, that we be notified. And the same thing for number 41. The wetland scientist acting on behalf of the town of Lakeville. Who's paying for that? Who's hiring that person?
I think we talked about that at the meeting, Joe. Through you, Mr. Chairman. That they will, I don't think they've been hired yet, but it will be our choice, they'll be working for the town of Lakeville. That's my understanding. Scott, isn't that what we talked about?
That's exactly what we talked about.
And a quick thing for Scott. Scott, go to number 42, please. Second sentence, near the end. These will remain in place and E maintained. There should be a B to be the word BE, like typo there. Other than that, I have no other questions.
All right, thank you. Josh?
I have no questions. I'm comfortable with what we talked about at our last meeting.
All right, good, thank you. And who's that? Mark?
Thank you, Chairman Bouchard. The only thing that I would just want to touch on is the proposed motion that Rhino put forward or VHB. Scott Turner, would you want to speak to that motion? And not the motion, the condition of surety relating to a certificate of compliance if there were some issues? And is that a dangerous thing? And I know that the Conservation Commission is actually very good with working with applicants. It's what Nancy said, that I think that they would be very human when it came further along the project if 95% of the project was complete and there were one or two things. I do think that they would work with the applicant on that. Would you agree with that, Nancy, Bob?
Yeah, you're correct. We're very flexible when it comes to those items, and we would work with the owners.
So Scott, would you make any comments to that, or you just leave it at that?
So the only comments that I have is projects I've been involved with. On the applicant side, I have never been involved with a project where a bond has been posted. I think if a bond is posted, then that would shift the responsibility for making sure those plants take to the town and not necessarily with the applicant. The applicant would simply forfeit the bond and get their certificate of compliance. The certificate of compliance is something that every applicant wants to get because it's an encumbrance. So, you know, it's really up to the Commission. But I guess, in my opinion, it's something that I have not personally been involved with. That doesn't mean it's not done in other places. That's just my opinion.
Chairman Bouchard, I have nothing else. I'm satisfied with however the Board decides.
Okay. Well, then I guess we're ready for, if no one else has a comment, we're ready for a vote.
I have a quick comment to make. This is Sarah French with VHB. I don't know if I have the most current version of the order, but Condition 74, I would advise changing hay mulch to straw mulch.
So it has no seed?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, we can easily do that.
I'm sorry.
That's a good catch, because we don't want the seed. We're trying to get rid of invasive species, not plant a metal there.
Right.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I may go as well?
Go ahead.
Again, I don't know that the copy that we have is the most recent, but Condition number 30, that speaks to the SWIP. It says at least two months prior to construction, the applicant shall submit the SWIP to the town. I don't know if that's intended to say weeks. It's a requirement that a SWIP is submitted to the EPA two weeks prior to construction. And I think two months would be a bit excessive compared to the EPA requirements. I don't know if it was intended to be two months, or if that was a typo.
Mr. Chairman?
Nancy?
Well, we discussed that at the meeting. And it came up that, and it wasn't me, but somebody said they didn't think one month was enough, so we put it up to two months. And that's my recollection. And I think we should ask Scott what his recollection was.
Yeah, actually, that's mine as well.
Okay.
Sure. So we talked about that originally. The condition said two weeks. The Commission, the discussion that I remember, I recall at the Commission meeting was that the Commission would like to review the SWIP and have comments and make sure it gets revised prior to construction beginning. And that if the SWIP was submitted two weeks before construction was to start, they would not have enough time and could possibly delay construction. So the decision was made to change it to two months.
Okay. At this point, since we have several issues, it seems, that have come up, do we want to delay? Do we want to continue for two weeks to resolve any lingering? No, you don't. You're ready for a vote.
Well, how about we meet them halfway instead of two months, say six weeks? That's a month and a half. What do you think, Scott?
I think that's plenty of time to review a SWIP, get comments back, and have it revised.
Because I've documented those two changes. So I just think we've been going on and on and on, and we have something that we want with those two little changes. I think we should get going. We worked hard on this to get this Order of Conditions, and it's ready to go, except for a couple of minor little things. Why would we want to rehash it over again at another meeting? That's just my opinion.
Just making sure we cover all our bases, and everyone had a say.
Right, and we have the opportunity, sorry, Bob, but we have the opportunity to make changes anywhere along the way. It's written in there real clearly that we can update it and make changes at any time.
All right.
Question for Brittany. I saw in the paper just the other day the legal notice for the filing on that SWIP that was just done.
Paper?
Yeah, those newspaper ads.
Oh, that was for the water quality... Yes, yeah, that's for the water quality cert that we need to get from DEP. That's related to the direct wetland impacts to remove the landfill from the certified vernal pool. The SWIP is a different process through the EPA that is required when there's any land disturbance greater than one acre.
Okay, just checking.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Jack Healy, Middleborough Planning Board?
Excuse me, I think you mean Mark.
No, we're meeting.
Mr. Healy, what's your comment?
I'm sorry. I'll wait until the CONCOM gets done, if you'd like.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we're going to let CONCOM deliberate, so please remain muted. Please remain muted until they're complete, please. Thank you. All right, at this point, do I hear a motion to close the hearing and to issue an Order of Conditions?
I make a motion to close the hearing and issue an Order of Conditions specifically the updated version agreed to at the 3/9/21 Lakeville Conservation Commission meeting with four minor changes. Number 35, a planting date of 3/9/21 will be added. Somewhere in here, there's XXX. I don't know exactly what number, but what will be added will be our agent's name and phone number for contact information. Number 74 of the Order of Conditions, we will change in the second line, hay to the word straw. And in number 30 of the Order of Conditions, in the first sentence, we will change two months to six weeks.
Okay, agreed. Do we hear a second? Joe seconds it. Any further discussion? No, hearing none or seeing none. We'll take a vote. Joseph?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, especially Scott. I'd like to thank Scott for helping us.
All right, so that concludes the business of the Conservation Commission. And we got the update from the Board of Health. So at this time, this is going to be a working session for the Planning Board. The public, the hearing is not closed to public comment, but no public comment will be taken tonight unless it's solicited by the Chairman for informational purposes. Continue to remain muted and, you know, until you're called on, please not speak. Mr. Healy, we haven't heard you. This is the first time I've seen you at the meetings. Would you like to make a brief comment? And I just would like you to keep in mind, this is our eighth hearing, and we've pretty much heard it all. So I don't want to rehash what we've talked about months ago.
I only have one question, Mr. Chairman. And that is whether or not the group has acted on or responded to the Planning Board's letter or the letter from Leanne Bradley, the town planner, relative to traffic.
We did pass that along to the peer review engineer. I'm not exactly sure how those conditions could be put into a special permit, because it's really not enforceable. We actually confronted Town Council, and we don't understand how to... Zoning ends at the town of Lakeville. They tell us it's like the edge of the world when our zoning ends. So I don't think that we could actually legally condition this project to carry over a town line.
Have you heard back, Mr. Chairman, from your engineer or the attorney?
I'm telling you the attorney's response, but Scott Turner, would you like to speak to that letter from Leanne Bradley regarding their request for traffic conditions?
Yeah, I mean, like all conditions or all requests for conditions, we've considered it. And it is on the list of potential special permit conditions. But I... The legal argument will agree. It's tough to regulate something in Middleborough if you're in Lakeville. So I defer to Town Council about my own attorney. I'm an engineer. So that's my read on it.
Do you have anything from Town Council, Mr. Chairman?
Excuse me. I was just scrolling through the screen to see if she was here yet. She will be here in a little bit. If you wanted to sit tight, and we can revisit that when she attends. She had to be present at our Zoning Board of Appeals meeting first, and they were expecting that to end early.
I thank you for that, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to Tyler Murphy. I think, Tyler, you wanted to address a few things from the last hearing. And then in addition to that, your attorney has sent us a draft finding that if you would like to speak to or have your attorney speak to, you have the floor now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In regards to the last hearing, one item that came up was the discussion about the South Coast Rail and the movement of that rail. Some of the questions that were asked around pedestrian safety had to do with a separate study. This project absolutely has accounted for that in that data, but the specific pedestrian data was in a different study. We have now taken that study into a memo from VHB that I will read on their behalf that directly addresses the mitigation measures that are being taken by the movement of the South Coast Rail for pedestrian safety. And I apologize for eye contact. I'm just holding this in paper in my hand. "This memorandum has been prepared to respond to a comment made at the March 4th, 2021 Planning Board hearing regarding the future increase in pedestrian volumes on commercial drive associated with the South Coast Rail project, which will relocate the existing commuter rail station to Middleborough. It is VHB's understanding that the primary concern from the commenter was related to the interaction between pedestrians who would now need to cross Route 105 to walk to the relocated train station and the increased truck volume related to the proposed Lakeville Hospital redevelopment project. While VHB noted that the traffic volumes and mitigation associated with the South Coast Rail project were incorporated into the traffic impact study for proposed project, we agreed to follow up and provide additional information and context after speaking with the project manager for the South Coast Rail project. The following text provides updated information and additional context to respond to those comments." This is for Middleborough. "So completed a road safety RSA at the intersection of Route 105, Route 28, and implementing recommended improvements. Modified traffic signal timing phasing at Route 105, Route 28, including providing adequate pedestrian crossing times. Modified traffic signal timing phasing at Route 105, I-495 northbound, provide new crosswalk..." Modified traffic signal timing phasing at Route 105, I-495 northbound, provide new crosswalk access Route 105. Modify the existing three-way intersection at 495 to a four-way intersection for the inclusion of the new Middleborough station driveway and modify the signal system infrastructure for a four-way intersection. Remove two unsignalized crosswalks at Route 28 at West Elm Street and Elm Street and replace them at the pedestrian connection to the station with a single crossing at Route 28 pedestrian access point. This new crosshacing is to be controlled by a pedestrian hybrid beacon. And then lastly, modify the traffic signal timing at Route 105, Route 79 Commercial Street. The mitigation measures summarized above are being put in place to accommodate pedestrian demands and provide safe pedestrian access in the vicinity of the relocated train station. Mass DOT is responsible for the implementation of these measures as part of the South Coast Rail Project. In addition to these improvements, there is also a plan to implement a shuttle service from Commercial Drive to the relocated train station. While the details of how this shuttle will be implemented are still being finalized, it will accommodate residents along Commercial Drive who currently walk to the existing station. This is a significant benefit to residents and should reduce the number of pedestrians walking to the relocated station. While the implementation of these mitigation measures should ensure safe pedestrian access to the area, there are a couple of additional notable facts that should help commuters' concerns. The project provided in the traffic study equates to such that pedestrian walking from Commercial Drive to the relocated train station may only encounter one or two new trucks on the walk. Given the existing volume along Route 105 in the area, this increase may not even be perceptible. Furthermore, it is important to note that any pedestrian crossing Route 105 between Commercial Drive and the relocated station will have protected, signalized crossings. Any new truck associated with the project will be stopped at a red light as the pedestrians cross Route 105. We hope this information coupled with the summary of the proposed South Coast Rail mitigation alleviates the commenter's concerns about the interaction of new truck traffic and pedestrians in the area. I apologize for a long-winded response, but it's, it's a lot of information. I think it's good, important information at that.
Mr. Chairman, as the person that asked the question, I'd like a moment to respond to that. No. We're not having a comment unless I ask for it. I think that was a sufficient response. It was not, so thank you. Welcome, and you're out of order. At this time, I'd like to make mention that we did receive approximately sixty-five letters regarding either support or opposition to the project. Those have all been posted to the town's website. Just to know that you have been heard. Tyler, I'd like to give the floor back to you regarding the documents from Attorney Mather.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I would like to review and go through in this document is a document of findings as well as waivers for the project. Mr. Chairman, in separating findings and waivers, would it be the pleasure of the board that I go through findings and waivers or just findings?
Um, I will leave it up to you. It's something that we just got. The board hasn't had a chance to really digest, but again, it's, it's your document you, you read and what you see fit.
Understood, thank you. At this time, this is a lengthier document. But I, I don't necessarily see a short way to go about it, but I will try to do my best to make it as short as possible in the interest of everyone's time tonight. The findings here, and maybe, maybe I should take a step back for a second. So the findings are related to the permitting that the project is going under, specifically zoning bylaws. So as you go through a project, it's important to make findings on if the project is applicable and meets the appropriate zoning requirements, which is what I will now go through. Pursuant to the town of Lakeville zoning bylaw section 7.4.1, the SPJ finds that the following conditions are met. 7.4.1.1, the use is not noxious, harmful, or hazardous and is socially and economically desirable and will meet an existing or potential need. The town has identified the project site both in their master plan and under the chapter forty-three D as a priority development site area. Redevelopment of the site will meet a socially and economically desirable need by removing obliterated, abandoned development and creating economic development, job creation, and expanding the commercial tax base. The project proposes a significant topographical, vegetated, and structural screening to buffer it on all sides and improve how the town experiences the site, particularly against existing conditions. Additionally, the project complies with the EPA Ambient Air Quality Standards 40 CFR Part 50. The applicant will abate remediate and remove existing hazardous materials on site, including structurally failing asbestos-containing buildings and uncapped, unlined, solid disposal area. The finding of that would be that the board would find that this use is not noxious or harmful and replaces the existing condition, which in fact is both noxious and harmful. Additionally, the development provides economic development and creates a safe landscape screen project that will create a better experience for the town and its residents. 7.4.1.2, the advantages of the proposed use outweigh any detrimental effects and such detrimental effects on the neighborhood and the environment will not be greater than could be expected from development which could occur at the special permit were denied. Advantages of the proposed use include redevelopment of a town identified priority development site area, abatement of existing failing asbestos-containing buildings, removal of unlined, uncapped landfill, redevelopment of obliterated property, increase in tax revenue, increase to jobs, and solving the longstanding safety issue for the town. Potential impacts to the neighborhood and environment if the special permit is granted include a small increase in peak hour traffic, which would occur if any redevelopment happened at the site, and in larger quantities for other uses as mentioned. An increase in noise, which again would occur if any redevelopment happened at the site. The proposed project is compliant with the Mass DEP noise policy. These are negated by the project benefits and are minimal under any reasonable expectation for a development suitable for a fifty-acre site. If the special permit is denied, the existing abandoned development will remain in place and continue to deteriorate, including releasing of airborne asbestos-containing materials and leaching of the unlined, uncapped landfill. The site will likely become the target of other redevelopment opportunities, which will likely create greater development impacts on the surrounding neighborhood, including water demand, wastewater generation, traffic generation, and noise. Summary of that finding would be, if the board would find that the advantages of the proposed outweigh any detrimental effects due to the following. The effects are representative of the development at large and are significantly less impactful than the other proposals to date. They are offset by the development being creative enough to manage a full cleanup of the environmental issues of the site while providing safety, economic development, and visual improvements to the landscape of Lakeville. The detrimental effects on the environment, town, and surrounding neighborhoods would be greater to the town should the proposal not be approved. 7.4.1.3, the applicant has no reasonable alternative available to accomplish this purpose in a manner more compatible with the character of the immediate neighborhood response. The cost to abate and demolish the existing buildings in addition to the cost to remediate or remove the existing solid waste disposal are so high that development of scale is required to offset the cost of cleaning up or removing the existing and banning development. The proposed warehouse use results in a relatively small development impacts, including those to water demand, wastewater generation, traffic generation, and noise. Alternative development uses may include residential and/or retail. Residential development of magnitude large enough to offset the cleanup costs would result in significantly more development impacts, including water demand, wastewater generation, and traffic generation. Furthermore, residential development would require an onsite wastewater treatment plant and other significant development costs and will introduce a significant number of new students to the school system amongst training other town services. Retail development of magnitude large enough to offset the cleanup costs results in significantly more traffic and sound generated by the development. Finding, if the board would find that the reasonable alternatives in previous proposals received are less compatible with the character of the surrounding area. This large land site with frontage on a state highway in close proximity to I-495, surrounded by a variety of mixed uses, is a better alternative to accomplish the development goals of the site as demonstrated by the forty-three D designation in Strategy 2-1-1 and Goal 4-1 of the 2030 Lakeville Master Plan. 7.4.1.3, the special permit granting authority finds that the proposal generally conforms to the principles of good engineering, sound planning, and correct land use, and that the applicant has the means to implement the proposal if a special permit is granted. The proposed development has been designed by the best-in-class experts from highly respected firms such as VHB, Sandboard Head and Associates, Arco New England Construction Tech Environmental, and Greg Lombardi Design Inc. The project has undergone significant review by third-party engineers during the last six months. Comments raised by third-party review team have been addressed and the project proposal has been revised accordingly. This third-party review effort ensures that the proposal conforms to principles of good engineering, sound planning, and correct land use. The applicant is a commercial real estate developer with over 1.7 million square feet under management. They are experienced developers who have brought an equity partner, Rockpoint Group, to further bolster the team's abilities. Rockpoint Group is a locally-based real estate investment firm that focuses on large-scale projects, completing four hundred twenty-six transactions to date totaling over sixty-four billion dollars. Rental Capital's development team in conjunction with Rockpoint Group is the equity partner, and the best-in-class experts previously mentioned create a highly capable, experienced team that has the means to implement the proposal that has been shown to date. Finding, if the board would find that the materials and plans presented with extensive review from the town's peer reviewer follow the principles of good engineering, sound planning, and correct land use required for a special permit. Additionally, the applicant has shown sufficient experience and expertise throughout this process, demonstrating the means to implement this proposal. That concludes the zoning bylaw section 7.4.1. Moving on to zoning bylaw section 7.9.4, and I will continue to do my best to move through this as quickly as possible. Trying to be respectful again of everyone's time. But these findings are very important and essentially the basis of all the hearings that we've heard to date. Zoning bylaw 7.9.4, pursuant to the town of Lakeville zoning bylaw section 7.9.4, the special permit granting authority could find, firmly finds the following, A. The water and sewerage facilities will be adequate to service the activities without a detrimental effect upon municipal services in any other area of the town. Water will be provided to the site by existing city of town water main in Main Street. The applicant has completed a site walk with the city of town assistant water supervisor to confirm this. Additionally, consultants AHA and VHB confirm the size of the main to be sufficient for the building needs. The applicant has formally submitted a water allocation request to the Lakeville Board of Selectment. The water allocation of 6,045 gallons per day compared to the other residential allocations in the immediate area is significantly less. Similarly, this allocation is also drastically less than the previous proposed developments for the site. Because of these facts, we feel there is adequate capacity and allocation available for water. Sewerage generated by the project will be disposed of by an onsite septic system and leach fields. The onsite septic system and leach fields will be privately owned and maintained by the applicant and therefore will not pose any intrusion on publicly available sewer systems. The onsite septic system and leach fields have been designed in accordance with 310 CMR 15.000, the State Environmental Code Title V, and are sufficiently distanced from all existing public and private drinking wells. A finding, if the board will find that the comparatively low water use to the other developments in the area and Title V compliant septic are adequate to service the activities of the site without detrimental effects. B, that the activities are consistent with the comprehensive plans of the planning board for the general development of the town of Lakeville as a whole, as well as for the DO district. Response, the project is identified as a priority development area in the Lakeville 2030 of master, oh, excuse me, a plan for the future. Master plan dated July 2020, the Lakeville Master Plan. The project contributes to the following goals and strategies identified in the Lakeville Master Plan. Strategy 2-1-1, focus future large-scale business growth to key locations around Route 18, Route 44, and Route 105. The project proposes large-scale, high-value growth along Route 105 aligning with this strategy to help achieve, this is another goal, Goal 2-1, maintain Lakeville semi-royal for character by encouraging growth that matches its surroundings. Goal 4-1, focus on redevelopment opportunities at the former Lakeville State Hospital and Dewey's Bowling Alley sites. This goal describes the site as a key for economic development, job creation, and expanding commercial tax base. The project proposes redevelopment of the former Lakeville State Hospital, achieving many of Goal 4-1's objectives. The DO district calls for activities appropriate for large-scale land areas that provide opportunities for economic development expansion while preventing detrimental effects. The proposed development is suitable and common for large land sites in close proximity to major highways. It will be a major driver of positive, of positive economic impact, providing jobs, tax revenue, and supporting local businesses. This is all accomplished while having a minimal draw on town services and utilities. In reviewing the other previously proposed developments of the site, in addition to the other potential future developments, it is clear that not only is the least impactful project on the basis of traffic, sound, visual, et cetera, it is also in line with any reasonable expectation for a development of the site. Any development of the site would create impacts of traffic, sound, light, visual. Understanding that fact, the impacts of this proposal are on the lower side of any reasonable expectation for a site of this size. Furthermore, the site is a chapter forty-three D priority development site. This is a program that offers communities a way to expedite the local review process for the development of towns identified, of, of, excuse me, of town identified priority development sites. On October 12th, 2012, the town and the state designated the project site as a priority development site under chapter forty-three D. Based on the goals, intent, and objectives of these plans and programs, the activities are consistent with the development of the town of Lakeville and the DO district. The finding, and that's the description, the finding would be that the board finds that the project is consistent with the comprehensive plans and general development for the town of Lakeville per the refer, per the reference goals of the master plan, DO district objectives, and chapter forty-three D. Common themes among these documents mentioned are large-scale business growth along Route 105, job creation, expanding commercial tax base, large land development, and prioritizing the specific site to encourage development. C, that the activities are compatible with or separated by sufficient space or topographical features from adjacent areas. Response, the project proposes a significant separation and screening by use of topographical features on all sides to buffer the project from surrounding areas. The existing development has parking areas as close to twenty feet to the property line and buildings as close as a hundred and twenty feet to the property line. The proposed development will dramatically increase these separations and add significant screening per the following. Along the frontage of Main Street, uh, excuse me, along the frontage of the site, Main Street, the proposed building is set back more than four hundred feet from the property line and parking areas are set back more than a hundred and twenty-five feet from the property line. Landscape area between the property line and the parking area includes topographical mounds and screening vegetation. Existing buildings are as close to the frontage of the property as a hundred and twelve and two hundred and ninety-seven feet. Along the westerly property side of the site, Rush Pond Roadside, the proposed building is set back more than two hundred and ninety feet from the property line and parking areas are set back more than a hundred feet from the property line. Landscape area between the property line and the parking area includes topographical mounds ranging from fourteen to twenty-five feet in height, screening vegetation, and an eight-foot tall fence equipped with Acoustifence product atop the topographical mounds. Existing buildings are as close to the westerly side now as a hundred and twenty feet and existing parking areas are as close to the westerly property line as twenty feet. The proposed building and parking areas are proposed more than two hundred feet away from Rhode Island Road on the northerly and easterly sides of the property. The two hundred-foot separation mostly consists of wetlands and wooded areas that will remain undisturbed by the project. The heightened general, the height in general visual impact will be significantly reduced. This is achieved by removing multiple structures that sit roughly sixty-five to a hundred feet above Main Street and replacing them with a single structure that will sit at its peak. Building sides are lower than the peak of the building, forty-five feet above mean average grade of the site. As previously mentioned, this line of sight is broken from public and private ways by landscaping, berms, and natural undisturbed resources. The finding, if the board could find that the project provides sufficient space or topographical features from addition, from adjacent areas by greatly increasing the distance of structures compared to existing, greatly decreasing structure height compared to existing, and screening, berming, landscaping the proposed structure to create a native, naturalized landscape. D, the resource of open space, surface, and groundwater is protected and preserved. Response, the project proposes redevelopment of a previously disturbed, developed, and abandoned site. Although the site has been vacant for almost thirty years, nearly the entirety of the site was widely disturbed throughout the twentieth century. The existing abandoned development includes seven buildings totaling four hundred and seven thousand six hundred and fifty-three square feet. Of varying heights ranging from one to eight stories. The existing buildings were constructed using asbestos-containing materials are in various forms of decay for their interior portions and are no longer protected from the elements due to failures in windows, doors, walls, and roofs. Some of the buildings have just completely collapsed. Furthermore, there is an existing unlined, uncapped, solid waste disposal area, SWDA, on the site, which includes solid waste materials, including incinerator ash, bulky waste appliances, clothing racks, construction and demolition debris, and other solid waste materials generated from the Lakeville State Hospital from the nineteen fifties through nineteen seventy-four. A portion of the solid waste disposal encroaches into the wetlands and a certified vernal pool on site. The project will redevelop previously developed and abandoned land. The project will not present a take- The project will not present a taking of existing open space land, however. The applicant has complied with all comments and requests from the town of Lakeville Open Space Committee. Creating an incredibly compelling landscape design which will remove the sites invasive species. Furthermore, the project will represent enhancement to surface and groundwater by removing the existing unlined uncapped SWDA. That encroaches into the wetlands and certified vertical pool. Finally, the project stormwater management is in compliance with the mast EP stormwater management handbook and all ten stormwater management standards. The project proposes stormwater infiltration features that are sized to recharge more than five times the volume of stormwater. Estimated to be recharged to the groundwater under existing conditions. The finding, we hope that the board finds that the resource of open space, surface and groundwaters are protected by the following. By the following removal of asbestos related to health hazards, removal of invasive species. Remove an unlined landfill in close proximity to drinking water sources. And the implementation of mass DEP compliance stormwater management system and native slash naturalized landscape species. I am very close to being done here and I continue to appreciate everyone hanging on with me. E. The public health and safety are secure. Response. The existing abandoned development poses poses significant concern to public health and safety. The existing site is unsecure and unoccupied, therefore making it a natural destination for trespassing and illegal activity. The existing buildings are failing structurally and causing asbestos containing construction materials to become airborne into the environment. The existing solid waste disposal area is unlined uncapped and therefore and thereby there is no existing protection against its contents leaching into the adjacent wetland. Certified vertical pool or underlying groundwaters. The project proposes to abate the existing buildings and remove them from the site along with removing the existing SWDA in its entirety. This addresses a serious public safety health concern as noted in detail in previous submissions. The project, the project proposes to activate the site with this with a commercial operation that will be securely monitored and maintained twenty four seven. Because of this, we feel that public health and safety are secured. Per seven point nine point four E. But a more accurate word would be that the public health and safety can be achieved by completing this development. The finding. We hope that the board finds the proposed development secures public health and safety by removing the active environmental health concerns. As well as structurally failing buildings that attract interested individuals. The construction of a building that will have security systems, measures in place, professional site maintenance and up to date life safety equipment and devices. Secures the safety of the site post environmental cleanup. That concludes the findings per the zoning bylaws. Again, thank you for holding on with me. There are additional waivers that we have requested the board to make. And they are much shorter and I will go through those again as quickly as possible. One. Under section seven point three point two, the property consists of twenty five or more acres and is zoned in the DO district eligible to receive a special permit. Under section seven points four and seven point nine of the bylaws. Number two. Special permit is granted pursuant to section seven point nine point two to allow the uses in section seven point nine point two point one. A, B, C, G and accessory uses to such primary uses. The project meets the intent of seven point nine point one for the appropriate activities for large land areas. Provides opportunities for economic development, protects natural resources and has limited impacts relative to the scale of the development. Four. The project has been reviewed and designed by professional engineers and is in compliance with seven point nine point five of the bylaw. Five. The legal notice and publication was undertaken in full compliance with forty A and the zoning bylaw. Additionally, the town of Lakeville provided supplemental noticing over and above what is required. Such as mailing all the butters in the three hundred feet and notice before each hearing. Number six, the applicant has been thorough and complete in their presentations. They've been diligent responding to and closing out peer review comments and questions. Seven. The applicant has been diligent and thorough in their responses to public comment, questions at public hearings. Eight. The applicant has presented all project components in a thorough competent, complete and digestible manner. Nine, the applicant has made significant site improvements to address comments and concerns from butters in the peer reviewer. As described in hearing number five, to mitigate noise and visual impacts from the project, they made large grading, planting and fencing changes. The project is compliant with mass DEP noise policy as well as zoning bylaws and special permit conditions. Ten, all peer review comments, questions have been addressed and closed out. There are no outstanding comments and questions at this time. The applicant has been, excuse me, number eleven. The applicant has been responsive to and incorporated comments and requests from the open space committee. Number twelve, the decision is reflective of and incorporates all materials, presentations, submissions, memos, letters, responses, et cetera, submitted by the applicant. Number thirteen, the applicant has demonstrated that the benefits of the project such as asbestos remediation, demolition. Solid waste disposal removal, tax revenue, job creation and public safety are achieved while also being the least impactful development proposed to date for the site. That concludes the findings that I have. And then I will quickly read the waivers. There are only four of them, so just one more minute here. A letter requesting waivers was submitted by Robert J. Mather or the project's attorney on March second, twenty twenty one. The list below is a reflection of that letter and includes a correction to density bonus. Provision seven point nine point six G of the zoning bylaw provides that the SPGA may waive strict compliance with its regulations when in the judgment of the SPGA such action is in the public interest and consistent. With the intention purposes of the zoning bylaws, the app, the applicant considers this list to be complete. Just read these now. One, allow a maximum building height for this project of forty five feet. Two. Allow a maximum percentage of land covered by structures, parking and paved areas to fifty eight percent. Three, allow for the eight foot tall fence within the one hundred foot buffer strip. And number four, allow for parking is outlined within the parking summary chart included on C two point zero zero, which is a page from the plans. Just so obviously people don't have the chart in front of them, that just shows the same parking data we've been reviewing to date, which is two hundred ninety day one spaces. With two hundred and six land bank spaces. That concludes the findings and waivers and again, thank you so much for the opportunity and time from everyone to be able to read that.
Thank you, Tyler. At this time. I noticed that Amy Questle from Town Council is present. Amy, gentleman Jack Healy from the Middleborough Planning Board had a question. Regarding. A memo sent by Lee and Bradley with a request for traffic conditions, I basically responded that. My understanding of zoning is that Lakeville zoning ends at the town line. It's been explained to me that it's like the edge of the earth, so it would be difficult for us to condition traffic. Conditions. Into a separate town. Could you speak to that for clarification for the Middleborough Planning Board, please?
Sure, it's Le, Le Prairie versus the town of Salisbury. It, it, there's a case that says that you cannot. You cannot expand your jurisdiction into another jurisdiction. So unfortunately, there would be no enforcement power of the town of Lakeville in the town of Middleborough. And not only that, but I also question the enforcement power on a state road. So, so, so there's a couple layers there as to why we really can't do that now. That doesn't mean that we cannot put a finding in the decision stating that. You know, the town of Lakeville would, would, you know, the town of Lakeville would like to see that. You know, all of the truck traffic go from four ninety five to the actual site and not go through one oh five, et cetera, et cetera. It's just impossible to condition it on that, unfortunately.
You're muted, Mr. Healy, if you'd like to have a brief response to that. There you go.
Yes, thank you very much. Yeah, the, what was, what, what we have suggested. Is, is not a condition, but an agreement. The, the agreement would be that the consideration. In consideration for Lakeville granting this special permit in Middleborough, this is a condition that would be in your permit. On confirmation of an occupant at forty three Main Street, representatives from the town of Lakeville, town of Middleborough. Current future property owners and current future occupants shall negotiate agreed to and draft. A traffic routing agreement. That is acceptable to the above parties and enforceable by the town of Lakeville and or the town of Middleborough. Enforcement protocol shall be detailed within the plan. The traffic routing plan shall address truck traffic directed into the town of Middleborough. By agreement of the parties to prohibit said traffic from utilizing Route one oh five as a cut through to access Route forty four. Or any other local roadways in Middleborough that bisect the town and connect with Route forty four. Truck traffic shall be primarily directed to Route four ninety five, north and south. Any truck traffic primarily more than fifty percent of the deliverable load for local Middleborough deliveries is excluded. The parties, and this is the important part. The parties will acknowledge and agree. That in consideration for Lakeville granting this special permit and Middleborough not opposing the permit based on traffic issues. The owner will acknowledge for himself and all successes and assigns that he knowingly and willfully is waiving his right. To use the state and federal roadways to the extent agreed to in the above paragraph. The town of Lakeville and the owner occupant both agree that Middleborough is a third party beneficiary to the condition. It is confirmed that the owner of the property is in agreement with this special condition. And forfeits any rights to challenge this condition as this condition was a material inducement to the town of Lakeville in granting the permit. And Middleborough waiving its opposition to the project on the grounds of traffic. This is a condition. That you can, and I believe you should impose in order to prevent that kind of cut through activity. And the negative effects it's going to have. And, and if you put such a condition in. Then we don't have to, we don't have to take any legal act, any negative legal action. With respect to this proposal. We, we have a right to do that if, if we're left, is that being our only recourse? But we're, we're pleading with you. As our neighbors. To take this action, it doesn't, it doesn't damage anybody in any way. And it's a condition not. That has to be agreed to, obviously. Not a requirement that you're imposing as referred to by the town council.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, if I may, so while I, I, I most definitely appreciate Middleborough's position. There, there's absolutely, there's, there's no way that you can enter into a condition to require. The applicant to enter into an agreement with another town. So what I would suggest that I think will, I, I, I really think might accomplish the same thing. You know, I would suggest that we put in a finding that states that, you know, the, the Lakeville Planning Board. You know, the truck, truck traffic will be primarily directed to Route four ninety five. And then we could even go so far as to say that, you know, once a tenant is chosen. That Rhino Capital will meet with the Middleborough Board of Selectmen and or select board and the, you know, Lakeville Select Board because. Unfortunately, planning boards can't enter into, you know, memorandums of agreement with other towns. So we could, you know, we could, we could, we could have a sit down once there's a tenant, once we know the tenant. I mean, there might be, there might, you know, we might come to the table and they might say, we're never, we're just going to go from four ninety five to the property and that's it. So, you know, and Middleborough might, all of their concerns might be, you know. You know, covered, so, but unfortunately, i- in this context with the, the context of a special permit, we can't actually. Require that an applicant enter into something, you know, subsequent, unfortunately.
Well, this is a, the, the, the way the, if you take another look at the language of this agreement, it would be an agreement between all of the parties. It's, it's not. And I, I have to ask. Has Rhino been approached with respect to this concern and this request and asked if they have any opposition to it? We might be, it might, it might be putting us in a position where we have to take a legal action to appeal the decision. Rather than simply agreeing. To the, to the terms of this proposed agreement. It's a, this is not. Can not intended to be detrimental in any way. But I think we should at least have the conversation with them, don't you?
As part of that agreement, could you stop sending all those tractor trailers up Bridge Street into Lakeville?
Yeah. Well, I'll talk to Ocean Spray about that.
Yeah, well, it's a valid concern. I mean, burn, burn sand and gravel does the same thing. Instead of going, you know, the one way off four ninety five, they come down and go through Bridge Street right in the middle borough to avoid the lights. I mean, it's, it's. Anyway. I'll, I'll digress on this. I mean, it's, it's, I suppose. The. Question being asked is this is not a place where we're at right now to. Agree to or not to agree to conditions and it's something that my legal team would have to review as well. There's just a lot of strings and different layers to this has been noted. I think if the request is that, will we hear it and listen to it and try to work together on a solution? The answer is absolutely yes.
Yes, Mr. Healy.
Has, has this request been discussed with Rhino?
All written information has been passed along to them. I can't say that we've had a.
Discussed with them to get their opinion with respect to whether they would consider getting, sitting down and having a discussion about it.
No, we had this discussion with Town Council and the peer review engineer on our side, not with the town of Middleborough, not with Rhino Capital.
So there's been, this has not been shared with them.
I believe they've seen the document. They get all the documents.
Do we know, do we know that they have been given the document and whether they have responded in any way?
They have not responded.
Mr. Chairman, Attorney Bob Mather.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to reiterate what Tyler said and for Mr. Healy. We will consider what we've, we've heard tonight. We will consider what Attorney Questle has said and. At our, when it comes time for conditions, we will address these issues. We hear what he's saying. We understand his concerns. We will definitely take them into consideration.
Thank you very much.
Mark, can I add on to that? This is Barbara.
Go ahead, Barbara.
Bob, with respect to the, these conditions, I, you know, I think there's similar concerns we, you know. The applicant has expressed a willingness to limit traffic on Bridge Street voluntarily. That was, that was earlier in the conversation, but Route seventy nine is a very grave concern for our community, as is one oh five. So the, the issue that Middleborough is bringing up is certainly a very large issue for Lakeville relative to the traffic flow. And I do feel it is something that we have discussed. I don't think this is news to the applicant. Would you agree, Bob?
I agree, I agree. We will, we will definitely thoroughly address these issues.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good time, Mr. Healy. At this time, I'd like to go through some of the submittals that the planning board has received over the past two weeks. We've received documents from Richard Scott dated February twenty eighth, twenty twenty one, they were received. It's edits on tech environmental letter of December twenty eighth, twenty twenty. Also received on March twelfth, twenty twenty one. Links in a sort of documents of division of air quality control policy. Another submittal responding to local noise, odor and dust complaints. And then a final submittal of DEP noise pollution policy interpretations. We received some documentation from fire chief Michael Brian. I think he's here tonight. Chief O'Brien, would you like to make any comments? We haven't heard from you yet. I know you, we've drafted a letter, but I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, the thing that, what I communicated to the, to the board, to the committee, excuse me, was that the. Basically some existing, existing hazards in the, in the building and, and the structure there. And I basically spelled out a, a plan or the requirements for, for fire department officials to respond into the building. to respond into the building in its current condition. And I communicated that the existing building presents a serious hazard to our firefighters because of the presence of asbestos. And it changes the way we respond into the place and changes. It mandates decontamination of any given patient, all the equipment that we use. It requires us to use special protective gear. And I just wanted to be aware of, it's not offering an opinion on any form or any, any portion of this project. It's just to make you sure that you're aware of, of the existing condition of the property and how it affects the operation of the fire department and the, and the life safety of, of the firefighters.
Thank you, Chief. So that's certainly something to take into consideration. On March 8th, we received a document from Health Agent Edward Cullen regarding email test pits, which I believe that's all been concluded with the last night's Board of Health meeting. There were also documents in our packet from Rhino Capital dated March 3rd, 2021. Rhino Capital dated March 11th, 2021. And then we had documents from VHB, two of those, one March 10th, one March 11th. Other documents submitted were USGS bounding analysis spreadsheets, DP9 upstream, end of 12-inch pipe crossing Main Street and the planting plan were included. There was one other document from attorney questioning the validity of the Development Opportunities District, which we did discuss at one of our hearings in December, which they are mistaken, claiming that the overlay district doesn't show on a map, but it overlays over the entire town. Just like our floodplain district overlays over the entire town. So there is not a map because it is the entire town. I would refer to Amy Questle just for clarification on that regarding the letter questioning the Development Opportunities District validity.
Yes, so, so, Mr. Chairman, I would agree with you that it is a, they are, they seem to be questioning where it says that, that the DO district would be over the underlying district as shown, as shown on the zoning map. Well, it's the underlying districts that are shown on the zoning map. The DO district covers the entire town. Furthermore, the zoning amendment creating the DO district was approved by the Attorney General.
May I, may I interject since, Chairman, that since that is a letter from my office? This is Attorney Tom Gay from Gay &amp; Gay. I'd like to comment on your opinion.
Please, yes, we would, the public would like to hear this.
Mr. Chairman, may, may I interject?
Very brief.
So with respect to the zoning ordinance, your, your ordinance has another district that does overlay over the entire town, which your attorney referenced, which is the Water Resource Protection District. That is Section 3.2.4, which specifically says the Water Resource Protection, Protection District shall be considered to be superimposed over the entire town. Emphasis applied to the entire town. Now, when you go to the Development Opportunities District, the last sentence of that says the Development Opportunities District is an overlay district superimposed over those underlying districts as shown on the zoning map of the town of Lakeville. Nowhere does it say over the entire town. Within your own zoning bylaws, it was carefully crafted in another section to specifically say the entire town. However, here it was left out of that. Furthermore, when we reviewed the warrant articles from when this was adopted, in no part does it identify the entire town is a development overlay district. I find it very hard to believe that at town meeting, you would get two-thirds vote to approve something so broad in a town as rural as Lakeville that is very much open space, that would allow any property that would meet this standard to fall within that and not identify certain parts of the town. So I, I strongly believe that your bylaws are flawed, that the town did not follow up with the process to properly impose, superimpose this district, overlay district. Furthermore, I know you said you discussed it previously. Another attorney, Attorney Morrissey, submitted a letter dated January 19th, 2021 that confirms or agrees with our standard. I, I believe that a careful review of the warrant articles from when this was drafted and what the minutes from those discussions at town meeting is required because this is a very much an oversight and very much an overreach of the intent of the zoning bylaw. When your zoning bylaw clearly identifies in other sections, when it does mean to intend to the entire town, here it does not. So I, I respectfully disagree with your Town Council's opinion and how the town has interpreted this bylaw. And I, I'd leave it at that for you.
So, Mr. Chairman, just quickly, Ms. Attorney Gay is wrong. The, the DO district only applies to properties that are 25 acres or more. And so therefore, it does not apply to the entire town. It applies, it, it covers the entire town, definitely. It overlies the entire town, but it only applies to properties that are 25 acres or more. And furthermore, I would again suggest that if there is something wrong with the bylaw, the Attorney General most certainly would have picked up on it. And the Attorney General approved the bylaw back in, I want to say, 2012, 2013. So clearly, any attack on the zoning bylaw, you know, clearly it was enacted properly and town meeting did properly enact it. They enacted it by two-thirds vote. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I would-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Comments, Mr. Gay?
He's muted.
Sorry. I would, I would respectfully disagree and specifically referencing other bylaws that were carefully crafted that do say the entire town. This does not. There wasn't, I assume there was an oversight and it was not broached at town meeting. It was not included in the warrant article. The language is very unclear as to what this district does imply to. Furthermore, within a town of, like Lakeville, I imagine there are a multitude of parcels that are over 25 acres. So I, I think to use the reasoning that it only applies to parcels that are 25 acres or more is flawed. Where your zoning bylaws clearly identify other districts by using meets and bounds or very specific language, where it is very easy for anyone to ascertain where the boundaries are. In this specific instance, that is not the case. And I, I submit that Town Council's opinion on this is, is incorrect.
Mr. Chairman, again, it, it's, it's in black and white. It's clear. It's in print that it's only, it only applies to parcels that are 25 acres or more. That was presented at town meeting. It was voted on at town meeting and that is what it is. It, it, that's what it is. It's, it's the entire town, if you have 25 acres or more. And that is what town meeting voted and that is what the Attorney General approved.
So I think that actually concludes tonight's discussion. Unless any other Planning Board members have any comments that they'd like to make.
Mark, can I ask a question? This would be directed to you and possibly, I'm not sure who, at VHB. There was an article in the local paper the other day, right, talking about this whole development process. And they talked about the building possibly being used for warehousing. And then mentioned a term I had not heard before in relation to this project, light manufacturing. Is there any consideration? Tyler, would you know, light manufacturing? Because that would require somewhat of a different permit. That's quite a bit different from warehousing.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not familiar. The article certainly wasn't by us or our team. So we've, I've read some articles with, that are mostly correct, but with some slight misinformation in them or the course of this presentation process. The, the project is, is designed for warehousing use. So I can't, I can't speak to whoever wrote that or where, where they got that from. In terms of permitted uses, just give me one second here.
I suspect this was not the most well-researched article in the world.
Well, when I, I mean, obviously, I, I, of course, I, I read them and there's always, you know, the, in fairness, they're usually most, just mostly correct. There are, like I said, slight variations, even in quotes of myself, because these are all recorded. So if you, what we're, what we're requesting here is a special permit granted pursuant to Section 7.9.2 to allow uses in Section 7.9.2.1 A, B, C, and G. What A, B, and C and G are referring to, C is warehousing. The others involve things like high technology use and these, these sorts of other similar type uses for a facility like this. Given that this is speculative, but we don't have a tenant, we do definitely want to try to, you know, cast as wide of a net as reasonable for what we've permitted. But like I said, you know, the focus of this project is a warehousing development and that's how it's designed. It's not really suitable for anything else the way it's designed right now.
Chairman Knox, if a possible client came into town and wanted to make that a light manufacturing center, would that require a change to the special permit?
I would say it probably would change because they're applying for warehouse use. So yeah, we would have to re-meet with the client or the tenant, which we would do anyway, no matter who the tenant is. But they're not applying for light manufacturing. They're applying for warehouse.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Jenkins, I see you have your hand up. I just, again, keeping it brief and I'm not going to rehash anything. This is our eighth. We're going to go into a ninth hearing and I'm not going to go backwards and open up three meetings ago stuff because people missed it. Go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman. I was just going to ask is, there's a number of people that are listening and the, the conversation between the lawyers. Is it possible to, to read the letter that was sent in from myself and the Bodwell so that everyone understands what was, what the debate is about?
No, it, it'll be posted on the town's website because that'll mean we'll have to read every document that was passed in if I read one. And it's this, hundreds and hundreds of pages. We'd be here for three more weeks reading pages. I'm not trying to be disrespectful of you. But like I say, Michelle posts everything on the town's website, so it'll be there. Want to look at it. Michelle, when will you have that posted to the website if it's not already there?
Everything from the past week. I typically send to Jess on, on Fridays and she'll either get to it Friday. They have a half day on Friday or Monday. So by the beginning of next week.
So where, where would one go specifically that they're not versed with moving around the town website? Where will they go to see that?
If you go to the town webpage, you look under the Boards and Committees tab up at the top and you go to the 43D Project and you can find just about everything located on that page. There's, it's mainly all to the left column. If you click into those, you'll see the letters.
Okay, great, thank you. We'll post it with the LRG group and whatnot and let them see it also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anne Marie Sherrick, I see you had a raised hand. Now it says lowered hand. Would you like to make a brief comment? And again, keeping something-
Yeah, I mean, I guess I was just remind, I, I'm looking at the bylaws of a public hearing. And, you know, as townspeople, we do have the right to discuss, even if it's things that have been brought up before. You know, I, that's, I, that's all that I wanted to mention.
But it's not that nobody's not been allowed to discuss them, but you're allowed four hours in a public hearing.
That's true, but you're, if you're prefacing things by saying, I'm not going to talk about anything we've already talked about. I mean-
We've spent close to four hours on every topic.
I understand that. But I also understand it's a public hearing. I'm not trying to be disrespectful. I'm just pointing it out.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, just, just to remind everyone, the public hearing started back in December. This is a continuation of the public hearing. So the public hearing at this point has been, I, I, I'm not very good at math, but it's been, you know, hours and hours. So, yeah, so-
Hours apiece, 21 hours.
Exactly, 21. So the, the open meeting law does also specifically state that it is the chairman's meeting and the chairman decides whether to take public comment or not.
Thank you. So at this time, I'm going to make a motion to continue this hearing until April 1st at 7:00 PM. Can I get a second from the Planning Board?
One second.
I have a motion and a second to continue. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack? I'm muted, Jack. And myself, aye. Motion carries, at least with a majority. So that concludes tonight's business and we will see everybody to resume on April 1st at 7:00 PM.